Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I want to share with you, while we were in a city council meeting, we received a ruling from the arbitrator who had been considering the city's vaccine mandate as it pertains to the FOP and supervisors' unions. The arbitrator ruled that the vaccine mandate for sworn members is valid and that the grievances filed are denied. There are a lot more details, obviously, than that. We will make the opinion available. We're still digesting it ourselves, but we'll make that available. But the arbitrator sets specific dates by which members who are not yet vaccinated must get the first dose and the second dose, and we'll be sharing that information with the department as well as the rank-and-file members so they're aware of what the arbitrator's ruling is. Next, I'm pleased to report that Andrea Kirsten has been approved by City Council to serve as the next chief administrator for the civilian office for police accountability, or COPA. Andrea is a longtime dedicated public servant who brings -- sir, could you put your mask on? Who brings a lifetime of relevant public safety experience and subject matter expertise to his role, which has made me confident of her ability to serve. That wasn't enough. Her time as interim chief administrator has proven just how dedicated she is to enhancing civilian oversight and ensuring police accountability. Under Andrea's interim leadership, COPA has accomplished some incredible work, including the completion of the backlog of inherited open investigations of Chicago's previous civilian oversight agency. As she formally steps into the role of chief administrator, I have no doubt that she will continue leading the agency with transparency, integrity, and dedication. As someone who performed in a similar role years ago, it's a really hard job. You need somebody who's tough but fair and is going to call balls and strikes. I think you heard that from a number of members of City Council today, their confidence and her ability to lead this organization forward, and I share that confidence and welcome her to the cabinet. I'm also pleased to report that I've introduced today an ordinance to strengthen the sexual harassment rules across City Hall and city government, putting us one step closer to creating a workplace that reflects the realities of today. For far too long, survivors of sexual harassment have struggled, oftentimes in silence, and have felt alone in their suffering. As city leaders, it's important that we have the ability and responsibility to change this reality, starting with our own workplaces. I'm a firm believer by leading by example. That's why this ordinance will increase the statute of limitations for people to report sexual harassment from 300 days to 365 days, so a full year. It'll allow the Chicago Commission on Human Relations to delay notifying the respondent for 30 days, which allows the person experiencing harm to request accommodations such as changed work schedule or new work site, and increase the penalty for violating this ordinance from 1,000 to 500 to 5,000 to 10,000. Furthermore, starting July 1 of this year, this ordinance will require all employees have an additional one hour of sexual harassment prevention and bystander intervention training. Employees who supervise others will also be required to have an additional two hours of training, and all employers will be required to have a written policy posted where employees can see it. That'll be a new rule for the city of Chicago. This effort, which is part of my administration's citywide strategic plan to address gender-based violence and human trafficking, will not only help to support survivors but also to hold those who cause harm accountable. Third, or I guess fourth, the treasurer's office and I have introduced an ordinance to mandate the divestment of city funds from fossil fuel companies, and I want to thank the treasurer, Melissa Conyers-Ervin, for her leadership on this issue. This is a big and important step forward in our citywide goal of ensuring a clean energy future for Chicago and the rest of our planet. If passed, this ordinance will require the city treasurer to update the list of companies excluded from city investment, as well as report to the City Council Finance Committee on whether or not any changes have been made to this list at least once per year. Also upon passage, the ordinance would make Chicago the second-largest city behind New York in the country to divest city funds from fossil fuel companies and help Chicago become a leader on this effort that we're all fighting for, which is addressing the terrible effects of climate change. Last thing from me before I take your questions. I'm proud to report that I've also introduced an ordinance today that will mend an agreement with the Illinois Tollway Authority to open up a western access to O'Hare, and talked about for years and years and years, and it's my hope with the passage of this ordinance that we will get it done. This will allow for the transfer of 202 acres of city-owned land at O'Hare from the city to the Highway Authority, as well as grant the authority use of airport property during the construction of the Plan I-490 toll road, which will connect the Jane Addams Memorial Tollway on the north to the Tri-State Tollway on the south. Once passed, this amended agreement will provide a clear path forward towards jobs, minority contracting opportunities, and improved airport access offered by the I-490 plan, thus helping us to strengthen our city and our state's economy. It's important, in this time, that we identify and pursue all viable options to increase our residents' access to good-paying jobs and other opportunities, and opening up the western access to members of the suburban community that also use O'Hare on a regular basis, and ensure that O'Hare remains the economic powerhouse that has been for decades for this entire region. I want to give my thanks to Chicago Department of Aviation Commissioner Jamie Rea and her team for their stewardship of these negotiations that led to the agreement that is now going to be memorialized in an ordinance. I also want to thank the governor, and I particularly want to thank Illinois Tollway Executive Director Jose Alvarez and his team for their partnership in getting this deal done and in the years ahead. Now, I am happy to take your questions.
Thanks a lot, Mayor. Appreciate that. Members of the media, we're going to pass down the mic. Asha and I, please keep your mask on when asking the questions. We'll kick it off with Heather Sherrone with WTTW. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor. Your proposal to sue gang leaders and gangs for their assets did not have enough votes to pass today. What more do you have?
I don't know that that's correct. We made a decision that we were going to delay putting it before the final -- for the final vote to continue to educate people. There's been a lot of misinformation, unfortunately. We heard a lot of that today about what the ordinance is and what it isn't. And again, I want to be clear what it is. This is -- would require the city of Chicago to file a complaint in court. We would always have the burden of proof. There was some conversation today that the burden shifts to the defendant. That's not correct. We -- by definition, this ordinance seeks to hold gang leaders, not ordinary members, but gang leaders accountable, and it gives an opportunity, if someone has an asset that's been identified but that would present a hardship for them, for example, a car, that they have the ability to appeal and then continue to have access to the asset. So we're going to continue to work educating folks about what the ordinance does and what it doesn't do. It passed overwhelmingly from the Public Safety Committee, so I'm not sure that your assessment that it didn't have enough votes is correct. But we will take the time that's necessary to make sure that we continue educating members of the public, as well as, of course, members of the City Council.
What specifically do you think people still need to be educated on? This ordinance was proposed back in September. If you haven't made your case by now, what will be different in a month or two months?
I think the difference is, I heard from a number of members, that they didn't attend briefings and weren't sure exactly what was in the ordinance itself. And we have made some modifications based upon the feedback that we've gotten, both from members of the public and from the body. So it's important that we make sure that we reach every alderman that continues to have questions and educate them about what's in the ordinance, what it is, what it is not, so that they can make an informed decision.
With the news that the vaccine mandate has been upheld in the arbitration process, do you have a sense of how many Chicago police officers will be disciplined and terminated for failing to get vaccinated?
Well, my hope is that with the arbitrator's ruling, which we obviously welcome and have been anxiously awaiting, that this is going to be a signal for those members who are not yet vaccinated to get vaccinated. What we've seen over time is that the number of members that are actually vaccinated continues to inch up, and I think my expectation is that we're going to see even more members get themselves vaccinated so they can be in compliance with city rules.
Craig Delamore, WBPM.
How are you, sir?
Hello, Mayor. Good to see you. What changes, if any, are you willing to make in the Victims' Justice Ordinance? Because there still have been questions, especially from some of the civil liberties people, about the ability of people to defend themselves against any lawsuit that may be brought against them and needing an attorney.
I really don't see that as an impediment for this. I think the people that want an attorney are going to have ample of opportunity. As a member of the bar myself, I know that people are willing to take on pro bono cases if that's what is necessary, and I would expect that there are going to be a number of people, particularly the civil rights folks that you reference, that are going to be more than willing to step up and defend defendants that are named in these cases. So I don't see that as the grounds for impediment to getting this ordinance passed.
So in other words, their legal representation depends on the largesse of the organizations, as opposed?
No. Many of these -- the people that we will target, they have plenty of money to pay an attorney, and they have attorneys that they regularly go to in defense of themselves and their members when they get into any kind of legal trouble. So I think it's a little bit of a red herring to say these poor murderous gang members, gang leaders, are not going to have ample representation. I think that's a red herring. But in the event that, for some reason, we target someone who now says we don't have assets to defend ourselves, which I think is -- I don't expect that to be the case. I'm confident that there will be someone who will step up and provide them. Look, bottom line here is this: We know that these gangs and their leadership are making extraordinary profits at the expense of public safety in neighborhoods all across our city. These are not folks that are struggling to get by. The people who we are targeting and are defined by our statute, these are the folks that are just shock callers, literally. They are the people who profit the most, to the tune of millions of dollars every year. They're not going to be without resources to defend themselves if they choose to do that. Some may choose not to. But the fact of the matter is, we have too many neighborhoods across our city that are in the grips of these murderous gangs, that they are -- people are terrified to come out of their homes. And so sympathy for people who are literally spilling blood on our streets every single day is, quite frankly, hard for me to understand or fathom. And the notion that somehow this ordinance won't make a difference, or I've also heard that it's going to make matters worse, tell that to the people living in neighborhoods that they are terrified, terrified, to come out of their homes, live a normal life because they are afraid of gang violence. Those are the people that we need to listen to as elected leaders, because they are suffering, they are afraid, and they deserve to have a quality of life that many of us take for granted, but yet they cannot because of these gang leaders who are terrorizing their communities with reckless abandon, taking lives on a regular basis. We've got to take away the profit motive from those gang leaders, and that's what we intend to do.
And my other question is on Aldi. Now that the City Council has cleared the way for purchasing that property, how long do you expect it will be before your intention becomes a reality for the neighborhood?
I hope not long. Look, the way in which Aldi abandoned that neighborhood, abandoned their workers, abandoned their customers, is a terrible thing, and I hope is not a practice that's repeated by anybody else in the city. But the fact of the matter is now, as you heard on the City Council floor, that community is now without a single grocery store. And you heard, I think, passionate commentary from both Alderman Ervin, Alderman Hairston, and others: We in other parts of the city take for granted that we have a multitude of options to go to to get fresh produce, to get good, healthy food to eat that isn't exorbitantly priced because we've got options and there's competition. One of the things that we must do in a city is address the food deserts and the food instability that way too many of our residents face. That's why we have a full-time personnel working in the mayor's office focused on this issue of food insecurity and food deserts. But we've got to have partnership with the private sector, and particularly groceries. And we are working on securing an option for that location, but it was important for us to take possession of that property so that we could continue the conversations that we're deeply involved with, with a number of grocers, to come in and provide a grocery option for that West Garfield Park community.
Thanks, Mayor.
So my hope is not long.
Alyssa Donovan, WGN.
Hi there, Mayor.
How are you?
I'm doing well. The Victims' Justice Ordinance, you've already made an amendment to it to focus more on gang leaders. What other modifications do you expect to need for it to pass?
I can't answer that question now. I mean, we've had a lot of dialogue with a number of different members. Maybe we need to make some additional tweaks that, I think, strengthen the ordinance and address concerns. We may, but that's going to be as a result of dialogue with members of the City Council and any other stakeholders who are concerned about it.
And in that, we talk about assets. What assets are we talking about?
Cars, houses, businesses. This is a very lucrative business, and you know as well as I do that many of these gang leaders who are really reaping the benefits of the drug trade and the violence that comes with it launder their assets in a number of different ways. I know that from my experience as a former federal prosecutor, where I prosecuted a lot of drug cases back in the day. They have ingenious ways of laundering their money and putting into seemingly legitimate businesses and other assets, and we mean to identify those gangs and what their assets are. And again, the burden of proof is on us. We've got to -- we raised the threshold higher than what the state requires. We've raised the threshold to only go after gang leaders. So we've got to prove that a gang person that we've identified is, in fact, in leadership, and then we've got to prove that the assets that we want to forfeit are, in fact, the proceeds of illegal activity. So it's a very high bar that we have to meet, and rightfully so. And I'm confident that we will meet that when we bring these cases, but a judge will be the final arbiter of that.
And Mike Low, WGN.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
We are graced by your presence. We don't often see you.
It's a rare treat, right? I have to ask you today about this kind of odd case that's been in the news. I know your office isn't directly involved in it, but this drug bust that we later found out the guy who was in the front seat that threw the drugs out the window belonged to -- the car belonged to the Internal Affairs Chief, Yolanda Tally. And then we later find out this other twist, that the guy who was arrested was the guy who gave the bad information that led to the Anjanet Young raid. To the extent that you can offer any comments or perspective on that case, what are your thoughts?
Well, I want to be careful here in what I say, so I'll -- my comments will be limited. I'm concerned about some of the coverage that I've seen that seems to intimate that Chief Tally had some involvement in what happened. I've seen zero evidence to substantiate that, and what I know of her is that she is very hardworking, very well-regarded, and does her job with integrity. Obviously, this is under investigation now by the Inspector General's office, so I'm not going to go much further there, but I'm very concerned, you know, as we all know, once your reputation is besmirched, it's hard to get that back. So I would just urge caution in reporting on this. Yolanda Tally has served the city with distinction, and I've no reason to believe that she had any involvement whatsoever in this matter. And look, I'm reading about this individual who allegedly tossed the bags of heroin out the window. Here's what I'll also say about that: Confidential informants are a fact of life in law enforcement, and it's important that their identities be safeguarded. You're literally playing with someone's life when you talk about this. I'm disturbed by the fact that clearly someone within the police department leaked information about this individual's status. That is a violation of many, many orders within the police department, and I urge the Inspector General to include in its investigation, to getting to the bottom of who did that. That's not appropriate. And I've literally seen, in my former career as a prosecutor, when people don't take the confidentiality of CI's to heart, that literally you're putting their lives in jeopardy. And I have experience with CI's who were killed as a result of leaked information. So this is a very serious matter. It's not trivial, and I don't want to go any further in talking about it, but I'm very concerned about the fact that his alleged involvement was leaked clearly by someone in the police department. That is not okay.
Appreciate your thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Mariah Olful, WBZ.
Oh, hi, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Eddie Johnson testified under oath that you ordered him to transfer Cynthia Donald when you learned about an alleged sexual relationship between the two. Is that true, and is it retaliation to order a subordinate to be transferred based on a sexual relationship with a superior?
Well, you're taking a lot of leaps there, and because this is still pending litigation, I'm not going to get into the substance of it.
Okay, so nothing on -- if those comments are true?
I'm not aware that the former superintendent actually sat for a deposition yet. That's not the information I have. But again, because this is pending litigation, I'm not going to get into the substance. I'm not going to try the case here in the public. That's not appropriate.
Can you talk a little bit more about the process to appoint an 11th Ward alderman to replace Patrick Daly-Thompson? Why did you choose the committee members that you did, and what do you see the timeline for this process? I know the goal, I think you said, was March. It's a tight turnaround for--
Yeah, I'd like to be able to present a new person to the City Council in time to be confirmed by the March meeting. That's certainly the goal. We're following a process that, frankly, was used in some regards by the prior administration. I like the idea of having people that are residents of the local ward be the first kind of line of screening potential candidates. We encourage anyone who meets the criteria to apply, and we will take their applications seriously. The panel will do the first line of screening, and ultimately, obviously, I'll follow the law and choose a candidate. We have talked to a number of different stakeholders in that community. There's been a lot of interest, as you might imagine, and so those names came to us from different people in the community, some of whom, obviously, we know. For example, well, I won't go into specific examples, but some of these folks are very well-known. They do a lot of great work in that community, and I think that the people that we've selected will do a fine job.
All right. Alice from The Tribune.
Hi there. Last time I checked on the city website, there were about 2,800 cops who said they were unvaccinated. Does that number concern you, or are you confident most of them will decide to get the vaccine?
Well, anybody who's unvaccinated in our city concerns me. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, and we know that the virus hospitalizes and kills the unvaccinated at a much higher rate than people who are vaccinated, boosted. So of course I have concern about that, and particularly law enforcement who are on the front lines every single day. I think they all need to be vaccinated for their own safety, the safety of their family, and certainly the safety of the community and their colleagues.
All right. Erin from The Daily Line.
Hi there. Will you consider calling, like a special--
Can you just speak up a little bit louder?
Are you considering calling a special meeting at all before the March City Council meeting to bring back the Victims' Justice Ordinance?
No.
No? Okay. Can you describe your ideal candidate to fill the 11th Ward vacancy, and are you expecting to choose someone who is Asian-American to represent that Ward?
Is -- what?
Are you expecting to choose someone who is Asian-American to represent that Ward?
I want to choose the best person who presents themselves, as somebody who has great knowledge and passion for that community, which is very diverse. I want to make sure that we have someone who understands what it takes to be an alderman, which is a very hard job, being on the front lines, responding to constituent needs, and there's a number of things that are happening in that Ward, particularly around economic development, so I want to make sure that we choose someone who is ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work.
All right. Craig Wall, ABC 7.
Mayor, if I can just follow up on that. Obviously, there is some community pressure to appoint an Asian-American because we need the first word. Have you made any commitment, or are you willing to make any commitment, to appoint an Asian-American to that?
I don't know who's even applied yet. Nobody's even applied, so I think it would be remiss for me to get out ahead of the process. I'm going to take each of the people that applied and review their applications with great seriousness. I'm looking for, as I said before, somebody who really cares deeply about the community and is committed to doing the hard work of being an alderman, and is somebody that I believe really is representative of the community. So I'm open. I understand and I get that there's a lot of interest in picking someone who's Asian. I'm going to pick who I believe is going to serve that community the best.
And just going back to the arbitration, does this, in other words, mean it's over? Does the FOP need to lay down their swords and stop fighting and get on board? Or, I mean, do you anticipate that this could be appealed in court and dragged on?
I can't anticipate, nor would I even try to, what the FOP will do.
Greg Pratt, The Tribune.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi there.
You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the Victims' Justice Ordinance and the gang assets seizures that the city wants to do. I'm just curious if you can talk about what is -- let's say it passes and you get the ordinance. What is a successful implementation of that work with? Is it three cases a year? Is it five cases a year? Is it -- because, you know, there's questions of, you know, it takes lawyer time when staff -- you know, there's resources that will go into any of these prosecutions. So what is it going to look like in a year to gauge the success of this, assuming it passes?
Good question. Look, I think what success looks like is that we move forward to target gangs that have an established hierarchy, that are clearly profiting mightily from the work that they do, and that we start to see people think once, twice, three times about being involved in this life. It's a very lucrative life for some. It's a very dangerous and risky life for way too many others, including residents in neighborhoods who suffer under the grip of these gangs. You know, I think a lot about, for example, mothers that I've met all across the city who've lost children to gang violence, who are still deeply, deeply traumatized by what's happened to them and their family. I've talked to so many whose lives just disintegrated as a result of this violence. I've also talked to people in a lot of different neighborhoods, on the south and the west side, in Little Village, Pilsen, and elsewhere, who literally live in fear of the gang members on their block, in their neighborhood. So we've got to strike hard blows against the grip that gangs have on our residents and free them up to be able to live their life in the way that all of us want to, with freedom and peace. So for me, success looks like not just the number of cases that we file, it's restoring a sense of normalcy to these communities that are suffering mightily right now. And this is one tool. We've got to use a lot of different tools in our toolbox, but I think this is an important one, where we send a very clear message that we are not going to allow gang leadership who orders murders, who doesn't care about the sanctity of life, who's wreaking havoc in neighborhoods, that we're going to take their assets and push them out of the comfortable and lucrative lifestyle that they've gotten used to. So to me, all of those elements are kind of rolled up in defining success.
I do understand that, and I understand the gang problem, of course. I'm from Little Village.
Yes.
I -- I'm just curious, you know, if you bring one case, you know, and then the Law Department doesn't bring more cases, then, you know, people are called a failure.
Well, I don't anticipate that we're going to bring one case. I expect that us to bring multiple cases based upon the evidence-- I expect that us to bring multiple cases based upon the evidence, and it, you know, this will, of course, be a lot of work, but when I think about that, some people have said, well, how much is this going to cost? Well, how do you value a life lost? How do you value the experience of people all across the city who are living in fear? How do we put a price tag on that? Yes, it's going to be hard work, but our lawyers are good. They're going to work hard. We've had a lot of discussions about this internally long before we launched this ordinance, about what it would take, certainly talking to the police department about whether this was even a viable strategy, because the gangs now aren't like the gangs before. In many instances, they're cliques and fractured, but there are still some gangs in the city who are very powerful, who are very hierarchical, and who have defined leadership that is profiting mightily. Those are the ones that we're going to focus our attention to.
And on a lighter topic, you know, George Blakemore talks, you know, he says interesting things, he says provocative things, he says offensive things, you know, mostly he just, he comes to a lot of meetings. Can you talk a little bit about?
Mr. Blakemore?
Yeah, who I know you have a soft spot for.
I do, I do. Look, I think that, I find him to be a very interesting guy. He's clearly a very learned person. I don't know much about his history, and he is everywhere. I kind of first learned of George Blakemore from my wife, because he used to come to library, public meetings, and was Mr. Blakemore. There's a fantastic photo of him, I actually think in The Tribune, when he was at a budget meeting, a public meeting back in the day under Mayor Daley, and he was expressing himself with great exuberance. Yeah, I mean, there are times that he says some things that I think are quite, quite offensive, racist and otherwise. He is, as you heard today, unapologetically pro-black, but I think fundamentally, he challenges us to be our better selves, and he challenges us to walk the walk of being transparent, being good public servants, and making sure that we never lose sight of people in the city who are suffering. And I think that has, his voice on those issues really has tremendous value. Not everybody shares that opinion. Obviously, before I became mayor, he was, I think, a catalyst for public comment at city council meetings, which I can't even imagine that we wouldn't ever have allowed the public to come in and weigh in on the issues of the day, particularly when now we're talking about spending billions, if not trillions, of dollars. Public voice is really important, and we have Mr. Blakemore and others to thank for that. So God bless him, 80 years young, and I hope he lives a very long and happy life.
Thanks, Mayor. Will and Kelly? Go on.
I'll hold the mic. I'll hold the mic.
No. Give me the mic.
I'm not going to give you the mic.
Why not?
Because I'm holding mine.
Well, you gave every other reporter the microphone, and now you're not giving me the microphone? Come on, dude. You idiot. Give me the microphone.
Okay, Harold.
No, no, nobody else. Sir, just ask the question. Nobody else held them.
This is not fair. Why would I not be?
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Why would I not be able to ask a question?
Thank you.
This is Mayor, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Thank you.
I don't get to ask a question, then? Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Are you guys okay with that? Are you okay with that?
I also did not hold the mic.
So you don't, you're not for freedom of the press?
You could have asked your question. Why you do, I'll do it.